Good evening, everyone. We're going to begin with some announcements. I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. This is the second of five public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for renewal leases for apartments, lofts, hotels, and other housing units subject to the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing October 1, 2017 through September 30, 2018. I'd like to take roll call now. Please respond if you're present. Hillary Botin.
Present.
Harvey Epstein.
Present.
Shayla Garcia.
Present.
Cecilia Hossa.
Present.
David Reese.
Present.
Helen Chau.
Present.
Mary Seraphy.
Present.
And Scott Walsh.
Present.
And Kathleen Roberts.
I'm present.
Let the record show that we have a quorum. The next meeting of this board will be a public hearing on June 12. In all, there will be three more public hearings to comment on the proposed guidelines. They will be held on the following dates, times, and locations. Monday, June 12, 2017, at the Bronx Museum of the Arts Lower Gallery, 1040 Grand Concourse in the Bronx, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Interpretation and simultaneous translation will be available in Spanish. Wednesday, June 14, at the Alexander Hamilton U.S. Custom House, 1 Bowling Green in Manhattan, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Interpretation available in Spanish and Mandarin. And Monday, June 19, 2017, at St. Francis College Founder's Hall, 180 Remsen Street in Brooklyn, New York, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Interpretation available in Spanish. Directions to these hearings can be found on our website, nycrgb.org, in the About Us section, Meeting Schedule. You can sign up to speak at these hearings by calling the Rent Guidelines Board offices at (212) 669-7480, then press 0 to register. There are copies of our meeting schedule here today at the table in the back of the auditorium. The final vote will take place on June 27, starting at 7:00 p.m. It will be held at Baruch College, Mason Hall, 17 Lexington Avenue, corner of 23rd Street in Manhattan. Now, for the board members, please note that drafts of both the hotel and apartment explanatory statements will be in your folders at the June 14 public hearing. We request your comments on or suggested additions to the statements no later than the morning of June 23. Revised drafts will be sent to you via email by Wednesday, June 20, reflecting additions resulting from the public hearings. If you have any questions, please see Andrew. And for the public, if you are interested in receiving emails regarding future Rent Guidelines Board public meetings and hearings, please see the RGB staff at the registration desk at the rear of the auditorium. Now, before we begin our hearing, I'd like to read some of the rules and parameters for those who are testifying before the board. Each speaker will have two minutes to give his or her testimony. In the event that large numbers of people wish to speak, the chair reserves the right to reduce the allotted speaking time. The clock will beep once when the speaker has 30 seconds left. I will try to alternate speakers between tenants and owners. This may not always be possible. Speakers must confirm their presence with the RGB staff at the registration table located near the rear of the auditorium. There is a Spanish interpreter here today. When registering to speak, please notify the staff if you would like an interpreter. I will try to call several names in advance. If your name is called, it is advisable that you move toward the front of the auditorium. If you have materials to distribute to the board, you should give them to the RGB staff sitting at the sign-in table at the rear of the auditorium. And we ask that you please try to stay within your allotted time so that we can get through as many speakers as possible. I'll now ask our interpreter to translate the announcements. Thank you. For favor, anotar en el acta de asistencia que tenemos quorum. La siguiente reunión de esta junta será una audiencia pública el 12 de junio. En total, habrán tres audiencias públicas más para presentar comentarios a los delineamientos propuestos. Estas juntas serán en las siguientes fechas, horas, y lugares. El lunes 12 de junio del 2017, en el Bronx Museum of the Arts, el Bronx Museum, el 10:40 de Grand Concourse en el Bronx, de 5 a 8 p.m. habrá interpretación disponible en español. El 14, el miércoles 14 de junio, en Alexander Hamilton U.S. Custom House, 1 Bowling Green, de 2 a 8 p.m. Las siguientes, el lunes 19 de junio, en San Francis College Founder's Hall, 180 de Remsen Street in Brooklyn, de 5 a 8 de la noche, y habrá interpretación disponible al español. Como llegar a estas audiencias, usted puede encontrar la información en nuestra página web, nycrgb.org, en la sección About Us, y en el horario de reuniones. Usted puede inscribirse para hablar en estas audiencias llamando a la oficina de la junta al (212) 669-7480, y luego presionar el cero para registrarse. Hay copias de nuestro horario de reuniones aquí. Por favor, consiga una en la mesa. El voto final tomará lugar el 19 de junio, perdón, el 27 de junio, empezando a las 19:00 a las 7 de la noche, y tendrá lugar en Baruch College más Mason Hall, en la 17 de Lexington Avenue, en la esquina de la calle 23 en Manhattan. Si usted está interesado en recibir emails relacionados con la Junta de Delineamientos de la Renta y nuestras audiencias, por favor, comuníquese con el personal que está en la mesa de registración. Antes de empezar la audiencia, quiero leer algunas de las reglas y parámetros para las personas que van a dar sus testimonios frente a la junta. Cada persona que hable, que va a dar su testimonio, tendrá dos minutos para dar su testimonio. Y si es que hay varias muchas personas que hablen, que deseen hablar, la presidenta de la mesa de la junta se reserva el derecho de reducir el tiempo que tendrá cada persona para hablar. El reloj va a hacer un sonido de alarma cuando ya tenga solamente 30 segundos, que le queden solamente 30 segundos para hablar. Voy a intentar alternar a las personas que hablan entre inquilinos y dueños, pero esto puede que no sea siempre posible. Las personas que hablan deben confirmar que están presentes con el personal de la junta en la parte de atrás, en la mesa de la registración, que está a la entrada de este salón. Las personas que van a hablar, no se les llamará a las personas que van a hablar si es que no se han registrado en la mesa de atrás. Hay un intérprete de español aquí hoy. Por favor, cuando se registre para hablar, notifique al personal si es que necesita de un intérprete. Voy a tratar de llamar a varios nombres con anticipación. Si es que llamamos un nombre, aconsejamos que se mueva al frente del auditorio. Si tiene materiales que quiere distribuir a la junta, les debe dar al personal de RGB que está sentado en la mesa de registración cerca de la entrada. Y le pedimos, por favor, que se mantenga dentro del límite de tiempo para hablar para que podamos tener la mayor cantidad de personas que hablen. Thank you. The first three speakers will be Sharon Cairns, James Jones, and Tiffany Lee. So first, we'll hear from Sharon Cairns.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm from the Upper West Side, and we are inundated with MCIs, and most of us are elderly at this point, and our own fixed incomes, and yet, one after another, we're just being hit with these one MCI after another. It's gotten to the point that nobody can afford to live there, and many people are being harassed out of their apartments. Or told, "I'll give you $25,000," and it sounds like a lot of money. It isn't, and they go away, and they end up in a shelter. And it's, I can't speak for any other neighborhood. I can certainly tell you about the Upper West Side. I really hope you consider that. We're good people, we have a beautiful neighborhood, but we're being pushed out, you know, economically. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cairns. James Jones?
Esther Scheckman crashed through the door. Esther Scheckman crashed through the door. Esther Scheckman began screaming or shouting, "She own, she own building. All tenants, get out." Esther Scheckman was immediately confronted by the tenant organization president. Black female, heavyset church woman. Esther Scheckman was lightly escorted down a small flight of stairs to the street. Esther Scheckman, the following business week, the following business week, found a buyer, male negro. Male negro had been pulling the garbage, also known as the porter. This male negro or porter was identified by HPD as pocketing $200,000 of their money. HPD represented to knock all tenant doors with this advice.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Tiffany Lee.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Lee, and I currently work for a faith-based nonprofit in northern Manhattan, which is closing at the end of this month. And I will be continuing to serve this neighborhood with faith communities as we start a new nonprofit to fill in the gaps the closing will create. I'm also a rent stabilized tenant, and active in several community coalitions, including Northern Manhattan is Not for Sale. I applaud the RGB's historic rent freeze the last two years, and encourage the RGB to vote for a rent rollback, a rent freeze, or the lowest possible percentage increase. Inwood has one of the largest concentrations of rent-regulated housing, with some 48,000 units, but these units and their tenants are under imminent threat. According to a 2015 report from the city comptroller's office, even after subsidies, about 40% of renters in Washington Heights and Inwood pay more than 30% of household income to rent. Speculation by luxury developers is rising, incentivizing tenant harassment so landlords can empty buildings, sell for enormous profit, or build new units to keep up the new influx of development in the neighborhood. Personally, as a rent stabilized tenant, receiving a preferential rent, I have been fortunate to afford to live in the same neighborhood where I live and work. Living and working in the same neighborhood, in the same community, not only keeps money in the local economy, supporting small businesses, but also results in numerous intangible benefits, including deeper relationships with neighbors, strong community collaboration, and local insight that continues to drive our community development work. Last year, I spoke here in solidarity, advocating for a rent freeze for my hard-working, overburdened neighbors. This year, facing unemployment, our landlord pulling our preferential rent, and the challenge of starting a new nonprofit to continue serving this community, I add my own personal request to keep rents affordable for hard-working, longtime residents, as well as community activists taking risks, so together we can continue to build communities where all are welcome and all can afford to live in dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Can you tell us a little bit more about your preferential rent situation?
Sure. We were actually in a better situation than, I understand, that most people, where the difference between our preferential rent and our legal rent was not that drastic.
I see.
But that's all the more reason why I'm grateful for the rent freeze that keeps that legal rent at an affordable level for myself and my brother, who I live with.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for this individual?
So, for the last two years, did you make a decision around the preferential, trying to keep the preferential where it was, and did your landlord increase your rent anyway, even though you could sign a one- or two-year lease, and with a preferential?
So, yeah, our preferential has gone up over the last two years, you know, obviously still within the legal limit, and now, after this, will be our third year that it's now at the legal limit.
So, what's happened now for your apartment lease is that preferential is almost gone, and you're paying now the legal rent?
Correct.
Right. And so, what do you see, what would a rent freeze this year mean for people you know and the people you work with in your community where you live and work?
I think that it's just the baseline, the stabilizing among all of the other rising costs around us and all of the other destabilizing factors that we're experiencing, you know, across our neighborhood, as far as the speculation and rising costs of all of the competing rents, and also just the continuous rising cost of living, that I think that this is a lifeline. It's a safety net to keep people hanging on and trying to advance amidst all of the other challenges of rising costs around us.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The next three speakers will be Carolyn Meckler, Graham Soralo, and Patricia Rosario. Carolyn Meckler.
Thank you very much for listening to me today. I'm a landlord. I have a five-unit building on the Upper West Side of Manhattan. I have two children, and I run the building by myself, with help by people I employ as needed. I do all the portering and taking out the garbage and stuff, and I know that I may be okay compared to a lot of other people. But a 0% rent increase every year means that the exterminator gets no increase, that the people who help cover for me when I'm not available don't get any rent increase, that every maintenance issue for the building waits as long as it can before it becomes a disantit, because there's only so much money. And though I do really want to maintain a mixed building and make sure that everyone is comfortable, I also have to be able to, and my costs are going up every year. My taxes are going up, my water bill is going up, my heating is going up. These things are not within my control. The law says how hot I have to keep the building. The law says how much I have to pay in property tax and water. Those are things that you have control over. If you want the building and to give no rent increases for stabilized tenants, I can understand that, and then there needs to be something like SCRA for all tenants, not just the seniors. That makes it affordable for landlords to be able to manage their buildings at the same time, keep them in good shape, and be responsible landlords. So, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Let's see if there are any questions, Ms. Meckler, if you don't mind.
No problem.
Can I just ask, you said a five-unit building?
Five-unit building.
And it's, do you live in the building too?
I live in the building.
So, that's why it's stabilized, because it's six units in total?
It's been modified through the 125 years. So, it's gone from single-family to 10 units, and now we're at five.
And then, how many rent stabilized tenants in the five units?
Now, there's only one.
There's one rent stabilized tenant?
There's only one, and he's SCRA'd.
And he gets SCRA?
And he's SCRA'd. So, I'm very well protected.
And the rest are market-rate tenants?
And the rest are market-rate tenants.
Great. Thank you.
But that still doesn't leave any margin of extra money, you know. My rents in the neighborhood have not gone up in four years for my non-stabilized tenants. As the buildings have gotten nicer, going up past 96th Street and between 96th Street and 125th Street, which I think is wonderful, the area is getting safer and nicer, and there've been a lot more luxury buildings, it has also made it more difficult for landlords in little buildings like mine to get any increase at all. So, actually, all my rents have been flat.
Yes, but for us, there's really the one apartment that we manage in your building.
Yes, there's only one apartment that you manage in my building.
And do you think we should set a distinction between owners like you who have one, or just a handful of rent stabilized tenants, versus landlords who have thousands, or large landlords? Do you think we should treat them the same or differently?
No, I don't think there's, as much as it would be nice to say that, I would have a hard time coming up with a legal reason and a macroeconomic reason that there's any logical sense that I'm entitled to something because I'm a little guy, and there's some big guy out there who's...
Also, owners who get MCIs and get increases for a whole host of reasons that you may or may not be able to achieve because you're, you know, you have lower reserves.
If you put in a lot of money and you're making your building nicer for everybody, then everyone should, you know, kind of, I mean, the landlord doesn't necessarily need to spread it out, but, you know, I think that's just a mechanism for making it a little fairer. You know, to be honest, my SCRA tenant, I do as much as I, he'll let me do, because he's very sensitive and he's older. He also harasses my non-SCRA tenants. I can't do anything about that. We try to make him as happy as we can make him. We try to buffer everybody else from him, because when he...
We have one other question, I think? No? There you go.
Hi. If you could just, kind of, just sensitize us a little bit to some of what your expenses are that have gone up, and if you remember dollar cost, that would be helpful to hear.
I didn't plan to come and testify, just came to watch today.
Excuse me, we're hearing testimony.
So, my taxes go up, the maximum allowable, according to, so that's about 6% a year. My taxes is my number-one biggest cost, by far. My water bill has gone up about 5%, and my insurance has gone up maybe about 3% in the last year.
Thank you, Ms. Meckler. Graham Soralo.
Can I just ask that, we wait till the people get seated till we have the next speaker speak?
All right. Okay. 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 Okay.[1724.42]
We have our terrace, we have our, the roof, and we have a third one. What was the, the boiler?
And how much increase did you see for each one of those MCIs? How much, do you remember?
Oh, wow. It's like $30-plus.
Per room or per MCI?
That was per, per room. Per MCI.
So you've seen three...
We live in the same building.
So you've seen three MCIs in...
In the last three years, two years, three years?
And so there's been about $190, $100 increase just for MCIs alone?
Yes, and what saved us really was the zero increase on the lease. That sort of helped a little, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your testimony. The next speakers are Pilar de Jesus and Delsinia Glover. Pilar de Jesus?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Forgive me, I left my testimony in the office, even though I didn't really prepare very well because I'm going to just speak from the heart mostly. So, my name is Pilar de Jesus. I am a resident of East Harlem for 36 years. I live in El Barrio. I still reside in the Mitchell Lama Co-op. I'm not a rent-stabilized tenant, but I do have friends and family, and I also work at the Urban Justice Center, the Community Development Project, representing tenants, working with attorneys, representing tenants, you know, who are being harassed and all the things that you know that they're experiencing. So, but, I wear many hats, but today, I'm here as a human being. I'm here as a very frustrated and angry human being. I'm angry, I'm frustrated, and I have a lot of words that may not be appropriate for this setting, but I'm very, very, very frustrated. And I would say right now, I'm probably most frustrated with you, Kathleen, because, you know, you are the chair of this board. This is the second time you are chairing this board, and you've heard the countless cries, the countless, countless cries. Many of you have. I'm not, I go to you because you are the leader of this board. And it's very frustrating as an advocate, an activist, that people are forgetting these are human beings. All I hear, all I hear when I've had meetings with a couple of the public members, all I hear is, like, we're treating people as their numbers. I mean, it's very frustrating for me as an advocate, as a paralegal, as just a person who lives in my community, and my neighbors are coming to me expressing their, you know, concern where they're scared they're going to be homeless, they're frustrated that their landlord is not making repairs, that, I mean, that's what they pay rent for, right, to have their repairs done. I'm frustrated that, you Kathleen, I feel, my opinion, you have taken sides with the landlords. I don't, I'm not understanding why anybody would have voted for an increase in the preliminary hearing. I don't see how. The data's there, the data's there, our cries are here, and no one's hearing us, no one. I feel like you sit, we, many of you sit there and you're just listening, but you're not understanding what people are going through. And I challenge you, Kathleen, and many of the public members, too, maybe, I think de Blasio and a few mayors did this one time, maybe you should spend a week in a Croman building or a Toledo building and live under the same conditions as these tenants do, and then come back and tell us how much these landlords deserve these increases, because honestly, the landlords do not deserve an increase. Many of them can afford lawyers for, like, Trump lawyers, and they're crying broke. They all go to HPD for hardships, and you know this. We all know this. They don't deserve an increase. And it's making me very, very frustrated because it's, everyone's doing this in the name of real estate, and I'm starting to feel like many of you are accomplices with the landlords, because you know what's going on, and you're still giving them rewards for doing bad things to tenants. They don't deserve an increase. Tenants deserve a rollback. They deserve a rollback. The data showed you, the cries are telling you, you are an ex-judge. I'm sure you can find a way to go to the housing court and see how many cases are being filed against a lot of judges, I mean landlords, like the Par Cash, the Croman. I mean, you've seen Croman is going to Rikers Island, and unfortunately, it was for, you know, taxes because the government, he messed with the government, but not for the terrible things he's done to people, terrible. Toledo is just right up there. And you're rewarding these people that. So I feel like you're an accomplice in many ways, and it makes me sad and frustrated because these are human beings. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Delsinia Glover, please. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Delsinia Glover, and I am president of the Tenant Association at Lenox Terrace, right up here on 135th Street, and I'm here to speak on behalf of those tenants and tenants in the surrounding community. I've had conversations with most of you, except for the two on the end, but, so you know pretty much what I'm going to say, and after Pilar, I really don't have a whole lot left. But speaking for Lenox Terrace, what I wanted to talk about is a couple of different things. And one is, first of all, I live in a complex where the landlord has begun or began destabilizing apartments illegally back in, back in the, around 2006, '07, '08, like that. Eventually, they were forced to re-regulate some of those apartments. But I would think probably a third of the apartments in Lenox Terrace have legal-regulated rents over $2,200 a month, and they are preferential-rent apartments. Now, even though we've had 0% increases in Lenox, for the rent-stabilized tenants who are left, the tenants who have preferential rent leases, their rent has gone up probably about 10% to 15% over the last two years because they moved in with these preferential rents, which is a bait-and-switch scam, with a rent of maybe $1,600 a month, and then when the lease comes up for renewal, they get a 10% increase. So if a third of the tenants in Lenox Terrace are getting a 10% increase, that means it's as if all of the tenants in Lenox Terrace got a 3% increase. The landlord, landlords are getting their money, they are not suffering, but the tenants are. We have folks in the room, I just heard a story from a woman who, her daughter is living in her house, she's 29 years old, she grew up in Harlem, but she can't afford an apartment in Harlem because the rent-regulated apartments with vacancy bonuses, and I know you all don't have anything to do with that, are beyond, are beyond, is beyond her limits. So I am suggesting to you that you either give us a rent rollback or rent freeze or keep it as low as possible, but we want a rent rollback because we think we deserve it. You know as well as I do that the landlords have been overpaid, and for the landlords, as far as their costs have gone, it's been a net increase to them of only 1%, but that still doesn't make up for the, for the large increases that tenants have had to bear over the previous administration. So as far as I'm concerned, you know it and I know it. Anything over a zero is a giveaway to the landlords, like 421A's Trump, the Cuomo's 421A. It's a giveaway to landlords, you know it. Don't feel as if, at the expense of tenants, that you have to now, after two years of a 0% increase, have to do something for the landlords. I've even heard that uttered out of, out of the mouths of some people in this room, close to you, maybe on the dais. So don't feel like you have to give something back to the landlords. They don't need anything back. The tenants need relief, and I am asking you to do the right thing. Do the right thing. Do the right thing. Do the right thing. Helen, do the right thing. David, do the right thing. Kathleen? Hillary? Cecilia? All of you public members, do the right thing.
Thank you. The next three speakers will be Helen Rosenthal, Candida Uwaga, or Vwaga, I'm not sure, and Cecilia Brulington Small. Good evening.
Good evening. I can't, are we here?
That's good.
All right. Nice to see you all again. This is my fourth year testifying before the Rent Guidelines Board, sending you the same message, which is that hundreds of tenants come to my monthly housing clinic from my district. They come and they talk about their landlords who aren't treating them right, right? And they need access to lawyers, they need access to organizing, and once that happens miraculously, they end up staying in their homes, right? So what I see in my office is the Sisfissian role of the tenant, where they're, you know, over, where the landlord has too much power, and they're frustrated, and they can't stay in their homes. So I represent the Upper West Side in the New York City Council. It's been helpful that you've had rent freezes for the last two years. But the freezes on the one-year leases come after years of rent increases that frankly considered the landlord's bottom line over the tenant's ability to pay. The freezes help to correct this injustice, but today, the tenants are still overburdened. In New York City, rent-stabilized households are struggling paying, on average, 36% of their income in rent, whether their income be from a paying job or from benefits, which of course are static. That means that while the rent burn in tenants are fighting to remain in their homes, the landlords continue to profit. I'll tell you, just last night, I was at a market-rate co-op building, right, not, not rent-regulated tenants, regular market-rate building. And before I spoke, I was listening to the treasurer and the board president give their report. Part of their report was that maintenance, their maintenance cost was going to remain flat again, and the reason being that the cost of fuel had continued to go down, and so there was no need to increase what people had to pay for maintenance. In fact, what he said was, over the last two years, the cost of gas has gone from $3 a gallon down to $1.50. It's a meaningful decrease, and it helps explain why landlords continue to net-net profit off of their tenants. Their costs just aren't rising. The Rent Guidelines Board unfortunately took the preliminary step to raise rents this past April, and you're, it's feeling like you're ready to go back to the situation we had for so many years, where the landlords would experience more revenue coming in, which only adds to their profit, while at the same time, the tenants aren't seeing increases in salary, aren't seeing increases in their benefits, and just are hanging on by a thread to stay in their homes. And I guess the difference between what you see and what I see is that I, come spend a day with me in my office over the next week or two. Spend a day with me and see, see the faces of the people who walk in with eviction notices, telling us stories of the harassment going against them. There's no question that the landlords are, from their perspective, picking off the low-hanging fruit and harassing them until they leave, because they look at these tenants and they see an opportunity to flip these apartments to market, oftentimes illegally. We've had tenants come in with what seemed like a market-rate lease, and when we asked them to reach out to DHCR to get what the rent, what their rent rule was on their apartment, they learned that in fact, they shouldn't be paying $3,500 a month, they should be paying $900 a month. And we've successfully gotten those, those apartments returned to rent stabilization. That's what you'll see if you come spend some time in my office. You'll see tenants who simply can't afford another increase in their life, right? They're dealing with the increase in the cost of food, supplies, and the burden on top of that of a raise in the cost of rent is just going to put people out on the streets. And, you know, the last time HRA did a study, I think the number was 43% of the homeless in our shelters are there because they had been rent-stabilized tenants and just fell through the cracks, couldn't afford the rent, were harassed out of their homes, were evicted for no good reason. I mean, can you imagine what the difference would be to the cost of the city of New York? 43% of those in our homeless shelters. So what's that? We're at 60,000, so 25,000 people out of their homes because they were needlessly harassed or evicted out. I'm asking you to think a little bit harder this year, and to not only consider a rent freeze, but at some point, we have to do a rent rollback. If we're at 36%, even a freeze is still going to leave people at 36%, right? And, you know, if we're going to believe these federal guidelines, which everyone does, why not bring it back so tenants can afford to live in the homes that they grew up in? I really appreciate your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Helen? Helen?
Have you answered any questions?
Hi.
But only if they're from Harvey. I'm just kidding.
It was going to be me.
Sheila, nice to meet you.
Can you talk a little bit about MCIs and preferential rents in your district?
So, here's, here's a story for you. I have a tenant who comes into my office who is now paying for an MCI for plumbing work that was never done. And the way that the landlord gets away with it is he keeps putting in for another building permit for doing this plumbing work, and so he gets the permit. He has falsified the architect signing off on having done this work and sent to DHCR, right? The plumbing work has never been done. She then went and researched nine other buildings that were owned by the same guy, and he's done the same thing there. Falsified records for plumbing work that never happened, and then submitted paperwork to get an MCI that she now has to pay. That's the kind, that's not an unusual story.
So we hear all the time that maybe that's like one landlord and many landlords. Is that what you're seeing in your district, or is that like normal, to see MCIs that are not necessarily done, or to see MCIs that are back-to-back for work that maybe wasn't right to the life of the, of the actual thing they're changing?
80% of the people who walk in my door are there because they're being needlessly harassed in one way or another by their landlord. 80%. On average, we see 4,000 people a year. And as we've dug into the details with leaders like Sharon Kans at her building and at others, we've been able to give accurate information to DHCR, so they haven't put MCI on MCI. If we're there to write a record that is falsified, then we can do something. And that's, you know, 3,000 people a year. We did an analysis that showed in, on the Upper West Side, we've lost, on average, 500 rent-regulated apartments each year that I've been in office, which is 2,000 just for my district.
Thank you very much.
Can I just follow up on preferentials? Do you see a lot of preferential rents in your district, and how do, like, what do you see, how that plays out for rent-stabilized tenants?
Just yesterday, somebody came in. I mean, I'm spending a little more time, understandably, in my district office. We passed the budget early, and so I'm here overhearing these situations. And someone walked in, said she, you know, just brought in her lease, doesn't know preferential, rent-regulated, market, doesn't know any of those words, right, and says, "Why is it that I signed my lease for $1,600 and now my landlord is telling me I have to pay $3,000? What's, why is that? Is that legal? Do I have any rights?" That's not an uncommon situation in my office. 80% of the people who walk in are there because they're being harassed or evicted out of their homes. And most of them, especially at the point where it's eviction, are older people, are people who don't speak English, are people who are sick and frail, and, you know, it feels...
And, you know, it feels like a lot of building owners. It's not just one or two. Trust me, we work with 30 building owners who are, treat their tenants terrifically. And we work with them and, you know, they're working hard to make sure their tenants get the, you know, the quality of life that they're paying for. But they are in no means, they are, there's no doubt, they're the minority. We're always glad to work with them, but they're the minority. And as I dig deeper on the City Hall side, what I see is a building owner who uses multiple different variations on the same name. So, you know, because we're trying to track down, is this a pattern with one building owner, right? So then we find that there might be only two buildings that are owned by Gray Seal, but there are three more buildings owned by Seal. And then five more buildings that are owned by Red Seal. And then seven more buildings that are owned by Seal Red. And when you peel the onion back and you go to the Department of Finance website, or you plow through ACRIS, they're all owned by the same LLC, LLC. And they're all, every tenants in every single one of those buildings are seeing the exact same type of harassment. Pine Management is another one, where they own multiple buildings. Stella's another one. Have I just said something that was inappropriate?
No, a kid ran down the middle of the aisle.
Oh, I didn't get to see that. So, no, it's not a random building owner here or there. It's, it's clearly, you know, I would argue, and we try to get the attention of the AG's office and, you know, the TPU, but they're, they're very under-resourced and overburdened. But I would argue the cases are just equally bad as Croman. And, you know, all these guys should be in jail. What they're doing is completely illegal. And so the Rent Guidelines Board becomes a really important barometer. And the message that's sent by this board is a message that either says, "We're going to sort of legitimize what you're doing," or it says, you know, "Open up your books. Show us what's going on, because we're not seeing it." Thank you very much. Thank you. Candida Vraga, and we need the interpreter, please.
Kathleen? Sorry, could, I just want to let everyone who is a monolingual English speaker know that the interpreter, while she's not being up here, she is also interpreting for the monolingual Spanish speakers so that they know what's happening in the process. So if it is something that you can't focus on the person's testimony, to not sit next to them so that you could also participate, but that to also allow the monolingual Spanish speakers participate as well. Thank you.
Good evening.
Buenas tardes. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Candida Vraga. Yo vivo in Inwood community for 25 años. Hello, my name is Candida Vraga, and I live in the, in the community in Inwood for 25 years. El problema del aumento de las rentas nos está afectando mucho, ya que somos gente que no gana un income más de 20 mil dólares. Yo vivo en un apartamento donde tengo que pagar 1,500 dólares. The issue of increasing rent is affecting us a lot. We are people that make less or up to $20,000 a year. La resonificación que piensa, que piensan hacer en nuestra área ya nos está afectando porque muchos de las personas que viven en mi edificio les están aumentando la renta a 2,500 y 3,000 dólares, cosa que no podemos pagar. The rezoning that is happening in our area is already affecting our building. We see that people are getting increases up to 2,000 and 3,000 dollars, and that is a rent that we cannot pay. Quisiera que ustedes que están en este, en esta situación y que pueden ayudarnos, hagan todo lo posible por parar esta situación, ya que en poco tiempo habrá más gente viviendo en las calles, porque no vamos a poder pagar tanta renta. And I would like to ask you, for you to do everything that you have in your hands to help us, because otherwise you're going to have a lot of, we're going to have a lot of people living in the streets because we don't have money to pay this kind of rent. Los trabajos realmente no están pagando un salario que pueda ayudarnos a pagar la renta. Entonces tengo que tener dos o tres trabajos para poder pagar lo que estoy pagando ahora. Pero después, ¿qué voy a hacer? Jobs are already not paying us enough of what we need. We already have, we already need to have two or three jobs. And then what is going to happen to us later when we need to pay more? Me gustaría realmente que pensaran un poquito en todo lo que yo y muchas otras personas están pasando, y yo creo que ustedes realmente pueden hacer algo por nosotros. And I would like to ask you to think about us, because I think that you can really do something for us and help us with this situation. Gracias por su tiempo. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cecilia Bruington Small. I live in Savoy Park Apartments, and I am a senior citizen. I am 75 years old. My husband is 81. Up until last year, he worked, but he had a pulmonary embolism, and he fell and broke his foot. He had surgery, has three screws in his foot, so therefore, he's not working anymore. And we're struggling to pay our rent. We're on fixed incomes. We've been hit with MCIs right and left. They gave us an MCI for a boiler that I don't think they did anything with because we were cold all winter. We paid for gates to keep us safe in our development. The gates are always open. They said they have cameras in all the hallways. They don't. So we are just having a hard time. And, you know, you work hard all your life. You think when you get a little older, things are going to be a little easier, but they're not, because this landlord is greedy. And we're just having a real rough time. And I hope that you will do something to roll back the rent so that we'll be able to stay in the apartment that we love, in the neighborhood that we love. The landlord is not doing all the things that he says he is doing, and people are suffering. So we hope that you will help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me? I have a quick question for you. What would it mean to have an increase this year for your family and other people in your, in your community?
I don't know if we'll be able to afford it. We're on fixed incomes, and the fixed income doesn't go up. You know, it stays the same, but the rent goes up. So what do you do? If we go someplace else, we're going to have to pay more rent. We're rent stabilized right now. So I don't know what we're going to do.
Can you tell us how many MCIs you faced with in the last couple of years? And how much has it gone up?
We've had, I mean, we've had the gates for the outside, we've had the boiler. They said they put cameras in the hallway. They didn't. I mean, we've, we've, we've got about 100 and something dollars' worth of MCIs in the past like five years.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers will be Shauna Harmon-Golf, Betsy Fisher, and Jessie Mati.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Shauna Harmon-Golf, the Community Relations Liaison for Senator Benjamin. Senator Benjamin is on his way back from Albany, and this is his first week as senator, but he wanted me to speak on his behalf because, and I'm here because protecting rent, I'm sorry, because he wanted me to be here because protecting rent stabilized tenants is one of his top priorities. Repealing vacancy decontrol, putting caps on preferential rent increases are issues he wants to attack legislatively in Albany. But just as important is rolling back some of the unnecessary rent increases from previous years. Tenants deserve the right to live in quality housing they can afford without being harassed. So on behalf of Senator Benjamin, we stand in support of rent rollbacks. Also, our office is now opened on the ninth floor in room 912 in the State House Building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Betty Fincher. I'm a resident of Harlem. I've been here all my life. I've lived in the building that I'm living in now for 44 years. The problem now is we have a new landlord, and in the last year and a half, they've done massive work in the building. Some of the apartments that people were living in, they bought the apartments out, so they were vacant, so they gutted out the apartments and did a complete job on the building, outside, inside, boiler, elevator, and you name it. The building looks wonderful. It looks great. My problem is, I'm a senior citizen. My children help me pay my rent. So with the, in another couple of months, I will be getting a new lease, which will be an increase, and not thinking about the MCI that's coming. So I'll be like other people. There are not that many senior citizens buildings in Harlem, which I would love to stay here. I've been here all my life. So I think with the landlords buying out the apartments and putting all the work that they've done in that particular, in our, in our building, that they has the monies. But myself, I'm speaking for myself, if, if I should get too many increases, I will have to leave the building. Where am I going to go? So I'll be homeless like a lot of other people. So I'm asking the committee here to look into people that live in buildings that have been there a long time and want to stay in the buildings that they've been accustomed to being in, that these rent increases will put us out. And me, as a senior citizen, where am I going to go? And how am I going, the resources that I try to get, they refuse me. So that is my plight. It's short and sweet, but I would appreciate if you look into the rollback, because this is greatly needed for myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessie Mati? Mati, okay.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I grew up in Washington Heights, and I've been living in Inwood for the past 24 years. I am retired, and right now, I'm living in fear of, I live in Inwood, and rezoning is a looming threat. And right now, my landlord is doing okay by us, but with the rezoning, we know what happens. Some landlords want, my landlord might retire, and he may sell to someone who is unscrupulous, as I can see what's happening with my neighbors. I know one lady, a senior citizen, a lot of repairs were needed in her apartment. The landlord said, "We'll put you in another apartment. We'll fix it up." They fix it up, and then $3,000 rent. She cannot go back to her apartment. There's all this trickery going on. There's a young family in my church, my neighborhood church. You know, when you're first starting out, you have student loans, you have kids, you don't have a lot of money. They have preferential rent. They're living in fear, because we have heard of people whose rents have gone up 200, 300 a month. Everyone's living in fear. It's very scary. So any consideration, I appreciate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next three speakers will be Cecilia Gentl, Ava Farcus, and Althea Belton. Cecilia Gentl?
Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm scared to death. This is the first time I've spoken. I'm a mal-eloquent speaker. I never thought I'd have to come forth on something like this. I am a recent retiree. My husband died four years ago. I didn't realize all of the bills that would be coming in. I live in Lenox Terrace. Anytime I want something done in there, they say, "Sure." You know, and then the rent will go up. If I want to get a new stove, which is, I think, illegal the way they have it, they have a cord going from the kitchen into the dining room wrapped in tape. And I brought it to their attention, and they said, "Oh, just put a, what do you call it, one of those things on the end?" Anyway, they don't do anything. If the tile breaks, which has been there since Lenox Terrace starts, they will bring up an old piece of tile, and I could play hopscotch, because they're all different colors. If I say, "Let me, if I can afford it, upgrade my apartment," they won't. My medical bills are going up. I pay for Con Ed, so I don't know why, if I, if they allowed me to get my own stove or whatever, my rent should go up. They're not paying for my Con Ed. I am. And there's a lot of other things, but like I said, I'm nervous, and I have nothing else to say. But the, oh, no. The one other thing is, Lenox Terrace has a lot of senior citizens living in there, and they're just waiting for us to die out, so they could bring in new people and triple the rent. Something has to be done, because I've heard it, and I never thought I'd be in this position. I will be in a tent in the street someplace. And I've worked 45 years of my life with a basically good salary, but things are going up so fast. Food, medicine, everything else, cable, Con Ed. I don't know how much longer I can last. Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question? First of all, thank you for testifying, and I'm sorry about your loss. I'm sure it's still hard on you. I'm sorry. Can you tell us, you know, what you've seen of the MCI's in your building or other increases? And how are you managing, like, is it, is your rent a high percentage of your income at this point, like, how, now that you're retired?
Now that I'm, well, I hate to say this, but I never paid attention to the MCI or whatever, and I know I should have. Because I was in the position, I grew up in Great Nick, Long Island, and I was never thinking about all of this stuff. So I was never in the position of having to worry about it. And it's my fault. But I see it on the bill, and I don't see my rent really going up that much from MCI, the little things that I see. What was the other question you had?
You said that the bills are now becoming expensive. I'm wondering how much is, your, how much of your income do you pay towards rent at this point?
Well, they're eating up my retirement quickly.
Oh, okay. So your expenses exceed your income?
Right now, I could pay it if I dip into my retirement. But how long is that going to go on?
Right.
You know, maybe another 10 years, and I hope I live that long, but then you'll have this really old lady on the street. And like I said, there are much older women living, people living there, and the same thing's happening. They're not giving us what we need. When I asked for a new stove, they brought up, no, refrigerator, they brought up, because it broke, a refrigerator from the basement, which infested my apartment with roaches. So I said, "Well, I need a new stove. Can I buy a new stove?" No. If you buy a new stove, I think I'm writing a new lease, if you buy a new stove, your rent will go up. But I'm still living with fuse boxes, so that won't take a new appliance. So that won't take a new appliance. It's like, they, they don't care. They don't care. Thank you. And I'm sorry if I'm not making a lot of sense.
Thank you for your testimony. Eva Farkas?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm the Executive Director of the Met Council on Housing, the city's oldest tenant union. Our members are rent-stabilized and rent-controlled tenants across the five boroughs. I think it's shameful that the public members claim to be fair-minded, yet voted down the tenant member's proposal for a modest rent reduction and rent freeze that would have made up for 20 years of landlord overcompensation. Despite the fact that the city defeated the shameless RSA lawsuit and can now take tenant affordability into account, the lawsuit appears to have had its intended chilling effect on this board. How can you justify any increase this year when landlords make 41% profit on every dollar in rent? Homelessness is at the highest level since the Great Depression. A majority of New Yorkers are rent burdened. Rents are already so high that it's impossible for a family with a Section 8 voucher to find an apartment in Manhattan or Brooklyn. Thanks. Helen Schaub, you represent members of 1199 SEIU, caregivers such as home health aides, nurses, clerks, housekeepers, transporters, pharmacists, and social workers. If you increase their rent, how much longer can they afford to stay in New York City? Cecilia Josa, you work for Mutual Aid Housing Association, which has provided low and moderate income housing to New Yorkers for 25 years. We have worked alongside your organization to fight for deeper affordability in Mayor de Blasio's rezoning plans. Now is your chance to impact affordability for 1 million families in rent-stabilized housing. Hillary, you are an associate professor at Baruch College. Your area of expertise is urban development, the social policies of affordable housing. As someone interested in how housing programs can meet the needs of vulnerable populations, you now have the opportunity to be more than an armchair intellectual. You can actually make policy that benefits the vulnerable populations you claim to care about. David Reese, you are a professor of law at Brooklyn Law School, concentrating in real estate finance and community development. You founded the Community Development Clinic. Your writing addresses issues related to secondary mortgage markets, predatory lending, and housing policies. But what about the predatory equity landlords who have a business model of deregulation of rent-stabilized housing? As Desmond Tutu said, "If you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." To all the public members, vote your conscience!
Thank you. Althea Belton?
Wow, wow, wow. Hi. Thank you for this opportunity. I don't know, I must have been sent here by someone from above, because I was minding my business and leaving out some, out the building. I work in the building, part-time. And someone stopped me and invited me in. Then someone in here invited me to speak. I'm like, "Okay." Does it say "real estate agent" over here or something? Because I am a real estate agent, by the way. But I'm also, I'm also a human being. A lot of good stuff that I've been hearing, human being, from the South Bronx projects. That's where I was raised. And then I moved here 38 years ago to Harlem. And I've seen it all. Everything they talked about. And I work for one of the number-one real estates in New York City, by the way. And the reason why I said I wanted to speak, I said, "Wow, this is deep." Because something is bothering me on my heart about what's going on in the city. Where I work, the people that's on programs come in the office, and they cannot get an apartment. And no one wants to help them because they, they have a voucher or something. And that touched my heart, because I know where I come from. Section 8 and the projects. So I'm like, "Uh-uh." So I'm trying to help these people. And then I realized, no wonder no one wants to help them, because neither can I make money to find them apartment. I cannot find them anything. They're coming from shelters. And then they're in there five, six, seven years in a shelter? I'm like, "Families in a shelter all this time?" That's because there's something underlying going on here that you all know too. I don't even have to explain it to you. Something underlying is going on. There's a mission going on that we all know. We talking about it and everything. We discussing it. But it's deeper than that, because it's reality that my children that was born across the street from the hospital, Metropolitan, I live right there. She was born 29 years old. She says, "Ma, she's pregnant with twins." She says, "Ma, you can't find me apartment?" Now, she's working, she's only making 42 as a health coach, but there's nowhere to live at that salary level. There's nowhere to live. Either you're making too less or you're making too more. I'm like, "Where do you live at that salary level?" So she can't stay with me. And I feel like, "Oh, my goodness." What, what I'm gonna do with my daughter? She can't, I can't find her a place. She's been on a waiting list, a different, she's, she's going online every other day. She get called twice from the lotteries, twice. We was like, "Oh, yeah, maybe." Discriminated, she felt. She cried both times. "Oh, we already filled it Friday." But she said, "But I told you I could come before Friday. Why you just calling me now? I need an apartment."
Excuse me. Can you wind up your presentation? Because you're over your time.
Okay. Okay, so the bottom line is that people do need a place to stay. That's where I'm coming from, my perspective. I'm coming from, and you, I can't even find people a place to stay as a real estate agent. And a lot of other real estate agents cannot find people a place to stay, because it seems like everybody's moving down south now. They moving, reverting back down south, because there's nothing here. And like I said, the underlying thing is that they trying to get everybody that's in the middle class or poor or underprivileged out of New York. It's point-blank, simple as that. There's no other, you know, reason why this is happening. And then my children and other people's children is not gonna have a place to stay in New York City. So if we don't do something about it right now, our generation is not gonna be in the city. They're not gonna be able to grow up in the city, because there's no, they're not gonna be able to afford it.
Thank you.